Call our meeting to order. Again, review and disposition. Anything to add to tonight's agenda?
All set, Mr. Schramm.
Minutes of August 13th, 2018. I'll entertain a motion to accept this stated. The second one. Okay. On the paper.
Hi.
Privilege of the floor. Who would like to speak this evening? Oh, wow, we're loaded.
Where's the cabinet?
Oh, it's a tag team. All right.
Yeah, exactly. Hi, good evening. I'm Alexis Ayen, I'm the art teacher here. This is Jenny Deloche. We're representing Plymouth Educational Association. We are disappointed at not having reached an agreement yet despite our attempts at creative solutions for negotiations. We are currently working without a contract. We're hopeful that negotiations can be resolved quickly. To that end, the team would like to meet with the entire board as soon as possible. We'll make ourselves available whenever the board in its entirety can meet with the negotiating team from the PEA. That's all.
Dooley noted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're also here because many of us have children in first grade and we've been, again, the enrollment size and the first grade classes being a foundational building block year have the largest class size at this point. It's the only grade that has two classroom teachers. There are 18 in both of those classes. We feel like that is too many and not acceptable in this community. All the other class sizes are at or around 14. When going back and looking through some of the school board meetings from last year, the end of May, that was when it was presented that grades 2 through 8 would be an average class size of 14, which was a grade number, and that the K-1 would have five teachers, two first grade, two kindergarten, a blended K-1 class. Unfortunately, the kindergarten coming in was a large class size. So now we feel that first grade really kind of is about the shaft in that situation. We no longer have the additional teacher there to help differentiate. There's no reading specialist this year. We're not really sure why there isn't a reading specialist. That's a question I guess we have for you. There's a Title I paraprofessional there, but a paraprofessional has a very different role than a certified educator does. A paraprofessional takes lessons and materials and things from a teacher, whereas a certified teacher knows where they're going. They have a plan in place. They might ear off from that plan because they see what the student knows and what they're learning and the way that they're progressing. And we really want a certified teacher. We want to add a third teacher to first grade so that they can break up that class size.
I can answer the reading specialist question. We, as you know, the Plymouth tax rate, there was about a $489,000 cut in appropriations last year, and that position was one of them. So the priority was class size. And so we went to everything we could get and bring the tax rate in somewhat under what it this year was. Thus, we went with five early on because we thought combination thereof, given the enrollment at that moment in time, we had it pretty well nailed and got the budget to where it needed to be.
Unfortunately, with retentions and students coming in, now that class.
Well, I know. I know. You do the best you can in February, March, and then you have to live with it the following year. So we have to manipulate the existing lines against the law to go over our budget. So we have to manipulate the funds that we have right now.
I understand.
I'm just telling you what the budget reality is, the board can do.
And I'm coming from a parent whose child, I value my childhood education, even first grade, he's a Tier 2 student. You know, Tier 1 students who need classroom teachers, I think, do a fantastic job. I think they're really solid first grade teachers. I know the Tier 3 students are getting that special ed support. He's a Tier 2 student who needs that extra support. And right now, we don't have a reading specialist, and they have large class sizes. So there's a few different things. I mean, we would really ideally like a full-time teacher in there. I think minimally to have a third teacher even half-time doing, breaking it up so that we can differentiate in the literacy and the math. Third grade has 36 students. First grade has 36 students. I don't know if we can get creative with the staffing that we have, but we really want a certified teacher teaching with first graders, getting smaller groups.
Julie, you did a good job with the chart that you made for the board. Can you, structurally, what are we doing right now in first grade?
Structurally, we have, using that literacy paraprofessional for Title I, her priority is first grade. So she's in there supporting the academic piece. We've been using some other adults to help for supervision, thinking that the supervision piece of a student raising his hand, another adult's eyes would be able to support the teacher. That person would be responsible for managerial, more supervision, so the teacher could focus on the academic piece. The third option is in third grade. We have somebody on maternity leave. She comes back in November, and we have a certified teacher there right now. That would be November, but that is another viable option of somebody we have in the building who we're getting to see firsthand.
The Title I help, because I've got eight schools buzzing around in my mind, the Title I aid is a certified teacher.
She is.
She is an aide for us, but she is a certified teacher.
She is. Yeah, very fortunate that way.
Okay, all right.
But correct me if I'm wrong, the paraprofessionals are taking the lessons that the classroom teachers are giving them and going with that. It's not that they're necessarily, they don't know the direction exactly that they're going in. They're taking the direction from the classroom teacher to do that.
Yep. I know when we were structuring it last spring with the first grade teachers, that was the design. And when we hire a really strong person, like the one we've hired, there's more collaboration. And so I'm optimistic about the person that we've hired in that role. But I hear what you're saying.
Could we, the board, take the Title I teacher, turn her into a full-time teacher? Because she's a certified teacher. And that would be the third teacher.
And put her in there?
Yeah.
Put her in that role. I mean, it's not something we're going to decide right now, but that's an option.
That would be phenomenal.
I guess if there were smaller class sizes, we probably would be a little bit less worried about extra reading.
And part two is, there's no room left in the building.
I understand, and that's another part of it. I mean, I know that we've done specialists on cards before. I know that's not what we want either, but ideally, we really want this reading and support. So we're sized.
All right.
Good option.
Yeah, a lot of options.
Do you need support from us to investigate this option further?
That would be great. At this point.
We can have further discussion about it later on, under other business.
Sure.
Okay. Has this class increased dramatically since we looked at this in March?
Not really. We've had three, just draw your attention to this.
I don't remember it being at 36.
Yeah.
It was 16 apiece when we, and kindergarten was 14 or 15. And we went with the five professional bodies in there. Those were the numbers that we were working.
I seem to recall smaller class sizes when we discussed this last year.
Yeah, we did. They were.
We didn't have anything that'd be in the lower grade.
And just to, since we're having the conversation, I've actually asked Jenny to start with the enrollment so that you'll get to see the changes monthly. So on this page right here, you'll see, I had to express. You'll see, you know, where we were at in August. And some of the changes look minimal, but over time, I think you'll just watch it kind of ebb and flow, watch our population ebb and flow. Actually, we did not have as much transient population this year, this summer. So everything pretty much stayed the same. But, you know, as Mark said, we were really hoping that we would be able to work the K and the 1 and keep those sizes, you know, at that just right 14 and 15. But between retentions and some other move-in students, it just grew just that much.
Okay. We'll have a discussion further on. Anybody else like to speak today? Nice crowd, everybody wanted to speak. Hey, principals report.
Great. A lot of thank yous in my report tonight. I wanted to start by saying thank you to the PTA for organizing a really wonderful welcome back for our students and for our families. We had Dave Lockwood and his grand piano out on the recess playground, and it was a borderline party. It was really festive. And that was wonderful. And then we had the welcome back barbecue. Again, it was one of those hot, hot nights, and I thought we'd have minimal turnout, but the parking lot was packed. And again, families and teachers and, of course, our students mingling together, great food, lots of laughter. And right after the barbecue, we had our middle school open house. And they not only shared the academic structures in place, they really talked a lot about the upcoming trips. And I know Kelly's going to talk a little bit about the eighth grade trip. I also wanted to say thank you to Ty Gagny, author of Where You'll Find Me, about the Kate Matrasova story in the presidential, in the White Mountains. And he's also, he also works with Primax. He came in to talk with our eighth graders about their trip and about situational awareness. He didn't really talk too much about Kate or that story. And it was just a couple of days before their big trip. So the timing was perfect, and he really had a great rapport with the students. He also started with a very simple diagram that is in his book, talking about judgment and decision-making. And talked about the human factors, the environmental factors, and the physical factors. And he kind of walked through how that's going to affect them on the trip. It was really great, and our students had great questions, great interactions with him. He is also coming back for our September 19th faculty meeting. Many of our teachers have read the book, and we're looking forward to talking to him about decision-making and judgment, but also the whole writing process as well. Our back-to-school with faculty was really focused on some of our core documents, the handbook and the four Bs, the posters that we have around the building. I think everybody appreciated the time to really look at some of these things that we've been working on and try to clearly communicate all of the messages that are there. So I know that we talked about, I sent out the handbook, and I'm not sure when is a good time to just get that rubber stamp from the school board.
Discussion items, it's its own, the handbook and the technology.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, they have their own category.
But, well, thank you, thank you for that. And then, and last, I have, over in the windows, out the door there, we are expecting the actual greenhouse this month in September. And once it's situated, we will host a grand opening. In the meantime, I would like to thank Alex Ray of The Common Man, Jeff Downing of CCI, Sarah Crane of Andrews Construction, and Bryant Pavement, Paving. They've all contributed significant resources, time, funding, expertise, and as Sarah Samborn would say, "We live in a great community." They worked really hard this summer. Upcoming dates, we have our open house for grades 1 through 5 this Wednesday. Tomorrow, we have the primary elections here from 8 to 7 in the gymnasium. And then this Thursday and Friday, the grades 6 and grade 7 are going on their overnight field trips. September 20th is picture day, and parent-teacher conferences are earlier this year, October 15th.
Hi. So, reporting on our sports, we officially got underway on August 13th with the football team kicking off the first round of practices. And then the week after, volleyball and field hockey followed. And the week of school, we had cross-country and soccer join in. So our current participation numbers, and this is for grades 5 through 8, right now we have 16 with the girls' soccer, 36 on boys' soccer. Football is at 23 students. Volleyball has 15, cross-country 16, and our field hockey team is at 34. Essentially, our football team's very similar to where they were last year in numbers. I think they're literally one student difference. We're fielding only just one team still participating in the Granite State League. They opened up their season this past Saturday, right across the way at the high school. They hosted a very strong Guilford team and had a 36 to 0 loss, but coaches.
It's not as bad as it sounds.
No, yeah.
It's an all-star team from Laconia, Moltenboro, Belmont.
Yeah.
And when they break up and go to their individual high schools, we'll see them then.
And find out this coming Saturday.
See them later on, yeah.
And then today, even with the weather, we are fortunate. We were able to get our field hockey teams opened up today. We were scheduled to have a blue and a white team. Blue team was playing Laconia, and the white team was playing Thornton. But looking at the forecast and thinking the weather was only going to pick up, we chose to just get in the first game versus Laconia. So they had a nice 4 to 1 win. And we were able to get our fifth and sixth co-ed soccer game in today against Newfound. And for a lot of young players and the first time stepping on the field, they actually did pretty well. It was a 3-0 loss, but we're technically saying it was 2-0 because the goal was right at the whistle. So the kids had fun, even in the rain. Tomorrow, hopefully weather permitting, our cross-country team heads over to Guilford. Volleyball will open up on Wednesday at Gilmington. And our seventh and eighth grade players, both boys and girls' soccer, has to wait until next Monday when they will host Kennett. So all those teams will be underway. Moving on to our eighth grade field trip, as Julie mentioned, we headed up into the mountains this past Thursday and Friday, September 6th and 7th. We had a total of 44 students climb and 20 adults. And we all started off our hike in a very soggy downpour of rain. And we headed up Greenleaf, Lonesome Lake, Galehead, and the Mitzvah Trails. The AMC huts definitely were a welcome sight for all the soggy groups, but the kids were outstanding on all the hikes. And essentially, once they reached the huts after a quick rest and a change of clothes, they continued back out and hiked further and summited their trails, which was great. During the downtime, the students have in the huts, they work on various assignments. Some of the things they did were observing and drawing their surrounding landscape and also taking note of the weather conditions and contributing factors. They wrote a letter to either Ivy, Sebastian, or James, which are characters from the books that they are reading, Backwater and Savage Mountain. And they had to relate something that they experienced on their hike to the experience that their character had been through. They also completed a creative writing piece of bringing a natural object to life and giving it a personality and a voice. My favorite was a student sharing with me her writing of a tree talking to a woodsman who was about to cut the tree down, and how the woodsman has already affected the tree's entire family, cousins and uncles and aunts. And eventually, the woodsman got in his truck and drove away and left the tree standing. So I thought that was pretty creative of her. And lastly, as Julie mentioned, we had guest writer Ty Gagny visit with our eighth graders and again spoke to the students about three factors, human, physical, and environmental. And the students were to describe the impact that each of these factors had on their hike. So it was nice to see the kids outside enjoying the weather and the nature and the beauty of it all, and then also really sitting down and putting some work into it, too. But, you know, along the overnight, the kids were curious. They were brave in some aspects along the way. They were extremely respectful of the environment and very supportive of each other along the way. And every year we go up, we have the AMC crew and obviously other hikers that we meet on the trail and that are also staying overnight positively comment about our students, and this year was no different. And people are, every year, in awe that we are a public school and we're doing this trip with our kids. And they're very envious and wish that they had that when they were a kid growing up. So that's always fun to hear, too. So again, along with many thanks, Mrs. Tanner, Mr. Breenler, Mr. McDonald, and Mrs. Weatherby for their organization enthusiasm on the yearly trip, to all the chaperones who encouraged and assisted our students on the journey, to our medics, Mr. Southworth, Mr. Chamberlain, Mrs. Sue Greenler, and Mrs. Kate Boyle, and definitely to all the parents who contributed and greeted our students with a welcome back barbecue when we came back. So it was a great trip. Lastly, our safety committee had our first meeting on September 5th. And just some quick bullets were that the emergency management plan was approved. It's provided to the entire staff for review, and they'll be indicating their acknowledgement of that review. We also had our first fire drill that day. The drill went very well. Veteran staff and students, definitely led by example, and our new staff and students took time to listen and prepare for a really smooth outcome of the drill. And we'll have future drills coming up, including bus evacuation drills, secure classroom drills, and obviously more fire drills to be held in the future. And also with the addition of the greenhouse going on right now and some of the construction, you know, it was very mindful of the committee to be thinking of that space. And we talked about alternative routes for exiting because a lot of our students do exit out that door and the lower door, and, you know, where we could find those alternative routes if needed be due to construction. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have some questions. Do the seventh and eighth graders, when they come back from their trip, do they display or do they have some sort of like open house of, here's my journal writing, here's my drawing about?
They don't have a public exhibition. They do do a lot of integrated work.
But do they have, do they like share it with their parents?
It's a great point, because that is a lot of what we're doing. We don't have anything scheduled for that.
Okay. I think that would be beneficial, even to have the other students be involved in it.
Right. I would think that those would be potential pieces that are shared during the parent-student conferences, because they're always pulling out highlights of some of their work, and I would bet that that's a piece of it, definitely.
Okay. Consent items, claims and payroll, everyone signed. Payroll correspondence.
We got something from the School Boards Association.
Yes. Discussion items, fiscal year 18 wrap-up.
Yes. Members of the board, you have this report that Dan Rosner puts together for you at the end of the fiscal year. I know Amy has some questions, but long and the short of it is, when you go down to FY18, you can see the revenues are about just over $8 million, expenditures of $7.969, and fund equity of $126,000. That's everything done, netted out. So that is excess appropriations and excess revenues above and beyond what we projected. The zero is, we carried nothing into the next fiscal year. Paid all the bills by a date and then closed the book. There was no money being, so your auditors will be thrilled at that. And the unreserved fund balance is all of the money, so $126,281.67.
Goes back to the tax.
Goes back to, as a credit for the next tax rate, for the next bill that will come out this fall. And that is, we're all being, there's a revaluation in Plymouth, so these numbers will be off. But that would be 29 cents on the $435 million net evaluation that we used to have, go along with the 57 cent reduction we had at district meeting by the netting out of the over $400,000 in cuts and then $200,000 in lack of state aid. So if we had the old valuation of $435 million, it would be about between the high school and the elementary school. It'd be about a 78 cent reduction in the school tax rate. Because elementary is, would be down 86 cents, the high school's projected to be up 8 cents. So that would be a minus .78. But that's askew now because of the revaluation. But we can still do exercise in raw dollars, so you can see dollars impact on it. So, you know, we haven't heard any report from the town hall about what the new valuation numbers are. I don't think they've done yet. So that's the big picture overview. The next page is your revenue. The budgeted amount is what our targets were, and the actual is what actually came in. We did okay with the stuff that we did, and the numbers the state gave us were a little bit off. So when you look at catastrophic aid, that's what the state tells us they're going to give us, $27,000. They ended up giving us $13,000. They said in adequacy, we'd get $2.127 million. We got $2.11. So you can see we're already off $13,000, $16,000. National Forest Reserve, the state gives us that number at $2,500. We came in at $2,294. Medicaid, that's a number that we project. We thought we'd get $125,000. We got $128,000, so a little bit better there. Building aid, we don't have any payments, so we get no building aid. IDA reimbursement, that's the federal special ed grant, and pretty close with that. We thought we'd get $225,000. We got $221,000. Service reimbursement, those are charges that we bill back other schools for Plymouth staff that may be doing some work for them, and that came in at $87,000. Tuition accounts, preschool, special ed, regular ed, individuals, and then the other, the PEP program. And then some miscellaneous income. That is, miscellaneous income is kids who are playing for sports, that pay for sports when they come in. Amy, do you have any questions on this page?
No, I think you answered all the questions. Well, actually, do what's PEP stand for?
Oh, that's a preschool program.
Plymouth.
Plymouth.
Educational.
It has to do with preschool.
Yeah.
When parents, when parents pay checks and things like that to the preschool, that's where it goes. The above number, the $57,000, that's money that comes in from the federal government. And then the next page is your food service program. Remember, this is a contracted service. Our revenues were $131,838. They were significantly down from the previous year. We went from collecting, the cash sales were about the same, $248 a day versus $242. Where we, the revenue really took a hit was from state and federal reimbursements, from $592 down to $489. So over $100 a day, we were off in federal reimbursements. Now, that can be a combination of factors, fewer people being eligible for free and reduced lunch, or, but the enrollment was relatively the same, so that's pretty far off, so we'll take a look at those numbers. And then the contract was $132, so we finished in the hole by $610.16, which is very make-upable in the following year, so.
Better than.
Yeah, we used to subsidize the program to the tune of about $60,000.
Yes.
So now it's, and now it basically pays for itself. And the last page is your capital reserve account. We have a building maintenance account, currently has $62,000, $60 in it. Remember, we, the taxpayers voted to take that out and put it toward the new movable walls that are there. Julie talked about those walls at your last board meeting. So that'll be down to, I don't know, a couple thousand dollars next year. And we'll talk about how to fund the remainder of that project during your budget process.
Can I clarify?
Sure.
My understanding was we were going to do three of those walls, and it looks like they were able to do four with the funds that were allocated.
Yes.
We did, yeah, we did four. So I think, what do we have, two left, two or six?
We have five left.
Five left?
Five.
Yep. Two major projects we're looking at, and that's rec. Two major projects we're looking at, and that's recoding the roof, the silver on the roof, and then finishing those walls. So, those are the, you'll see those two projects coming up from John. Everything else is in really good shape. At some point, we ought to also do the parking lot in terms of the?
Crack seal?
Yeah, just crack seal and the stain. But other than that, the building's in great shape.
Any more questions for Mark? Responsible tech use policy and handbook approval.
Julie sent to you electronically the handbook and? Are there any questions for Julie?
No, I would suggest that before you send out the piece of paper to have parents sign off on it, have it complete. Because I bet, oh, like, because we got it was like, you know, sign off on the handbook. And then I was like, wait, the handbook's not the updated one because I have one on the website. So, I just, for future, you know, like before you send it out, make sure that's, before you have parents sign off on it, would be my only suggestion.
We need a motion to approve?
Yes, please.
Motion to approve the handbook, parent handbook.
Second. Favorite? Approved.
So, that's going out, just so you know.
Okay.
And the responsible technology use, do you have any questions about that? Can you approve that separately, too?
Might do that separately?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion? Second?
Second.
Approved? That's pretty easy. Okay. Support staff nominations and resignations?
Yes, after non-public, we'll have, there are three nominations and one resignation.
Any other business?
We just took the first grade discussion and slotted it right in other business, so.
Further discussion on first grade? This, adding this teacher in. This doesn't affect the budget. We'll be down a percent.
No, no, it does affect the budget.
It does affect the budget.
Yeah. And just sitting here for the last twenty minutes thinking about?
Thinking about how you're going to pay for it?
Breaking even and how I was going to pay for it. I think the potential is to rewrite the Title I grant to add, just to rewrite the Title I, take money away from something else we were going to do and use that money for this teacher if the board approves it. And then I think we break even on the grant and shouldn't impact other than what we're going to cut for some of the loose ends. But I had the money for the paraprofessional, so we'd be slotting in extra money. So, I don't know exactly what we would cut in terms of stuff. But that's where the money would come to pay the position. Now, the issue of the space is completely different and I'm not on top of where you have people, quite frankly. So, or what we've done before. Last time we moved somebody was Ellen Hand and Spanish. And that's something I think we ought to give Julie a little bit of time to think about. I mean, you just don't want to arbitrarily make a decision tonight. I think that people need to have a conversation about spacing and where, if we did this, where it would go.
The opinion of the board to move forward?
I would support it.
Just a clarifying question. So, are we thinking of using the Title I teacher as a third teacher?
Yes.
And have a third?
Yeah, and the Title I grant would pay the entire salary. And then whatever Ethel had slotted in for stuff?
Professional development.
That will go to pay for the teacher.
And is there room in the building to be able to do this? This would be the biggest issue.
That's the, we can maneuver the money and break even, I think. It's what do you do? And it's not something you're going to answer tonight.
You know, with the tax rate, we had a very, very tight budget. So, it's playing with pennies at this point. Okay, we'll leave it.
Yeah, you know what, if we could, if the board would allow Julie and I to come up with some options, maybe do a telephone survey for you and just say, this is what we're thinking. And if the board wants to, we'll go ahead with doing that. It's just a matter of coming up with the space. Fair enough? So, you don't want to, we don't have to wait a month for your next meeting if we do it that way.
Yeah, it's class sizes of eighteen in the first grade or two.
Is that fair?
Do we need to make the emails available as part of the write-down?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, everything would be on the up and up. So, it'd be a statement from me saying, here's what we're thinking. And then that would be part of your minutes at your next meeting.
In ninety-one, that's lovely.
You guys would respond to it. Well, it is public, you know, it's public. And then I'll work, I'll work with Ethel and relook at that grant, send it down to the state to see if they'll approve. I'm sure they'll approve it. It's just what goes. Okay?
Privilege of the floor two.
I just want to clarify, I wanted to use the top for solutions, you need solutions to the location?
Yes.
Yeah. Now, we have to work that part out.
Leaving, leaving tonight.
I understand.
Yeah, yeah, it's all about where.
So, just want to clarify, the Title I para would move to a Title I teacher? Is that going to?
Well, we post, we have to follow the collective bargaining agreement, post position.
Right.
But, but, yeah.
So, will that Title I teacher be K eight and possibly support the high numbers in seventh grade of sixty students? Or is that Title I teacher going to be?
Title I teacher is going to be going into the first grade.
In addition to the third teacher?
No, 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 no. The position is eliminated, aid position to be eliminated. Be upgraded to a teacher, which is completely legal in Title I world.
Right, and then two first-grade teachers.
They're what?
That would be a first-grade teacher.
So, it'd be three sections of first grade.
Okay.
End of story.
Okay. And no Title I reading aid for para?
No, that money would be used to rewrite the grant.
So, I believe we will not have that reading support. That's?
No, that goes with the money. There's X amount of dollars.
One other question. So, would that teacher have to, are we Title I school wide?
Yes.
Okay.
I would just like to say that I really love my new movable wall. I know it was a lot of money, but I don't feel like I'm taking my life into my hands every time I move that. And it really affords us the opportunity to collaborate and team. And when we're getting ready for these big trips and we have sixty students all in the seventh grade, being able to have those two classrooms, especially when it was incredibly hot, it's amazing. And I mean, I can move out with one thing of, it's amazing. Plus, I have the functionality of some whiteboards on there and I really, really appreciate that. Thank you. Plus, I can't hear Mr. McGlong all the time. And that's a huge plus. But he can't hear me, but that's probably also a huge plus. So, thank you.
I'm just wondering about student to adult ratios for the morning on recess. My family had a concern just recently and we've heard of multiple concerns about issues on the playground in the first in the morning. So, I was wondering if there's been any talk about that.
We, but we did expand the middle school because we had some concerns on the middle school. So, we have increased supervision on the middle school playground. Starting at seven forty-five, we have one person, we call a super para on, really for convenience of families who to come. And then officially at eight, when the buses come in, we have two, one for the intermediate and one for the primary wing.
So, there's two total?
There's two total.
How many students are usually out there between, like, say, seven forty-five to eight and then eight to five o'clock?
It can, you know, probably, probably a hundred and fifty, two hundred.
So, you're, two people for a hundred and fifty kids, that ratio seems kind of odd. Because it's a good-sized playground, there's a playset in the middle of it. So, kids can go into the field without any problem, kids can jump in other people's cars. And we care about on TV all the time about that stuff. So, a hundred and fifty to two, and there's like many adults that even the teachers don't even know who they are. And it's the same case for me when I've been, have, have had the chance to drop off the kids, I don't even know who the para or the adult that's out there. So, I'm wondering if you can rethink that ratio. Because it's getting pretty dangerous.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for the movable wall as well. It's a little, not crazy in my classroom, but the science, the kids always knew exactly what was happening in my classroom before they came in and after they were in Ms. Farmley's room, so it's nice to have that. I also wanted to reference the eighth grade trip, how grateful I am that the students have these opportunities, five, six, seven, and eight. And about the journals, Kayden came home, I have an eighth grader, Kayden came home with this journal. So, I'm able to actually look at it that night and they do not stop talking about it. You will hear about these trips until eternity. Trevin was talking about it with Kayden. They leave letters to each other up at the huts. So, it's really, a really cool thing. So, you will get a lot of information when they come, more than you want.
Well, I would kind of like to add on that, what Amy was kind of thinking is, do those older kids ever get a chance to share it with the younger kids? Because they're moving up through, they get really excited about nature and being outside and getting ready for something like that. You know, I know a lot of little kids who might find that really interesting.
Or even get, I'm excited to go to the middle school because a lot of kids get really scared. I teach sixth grade and having those younger kids come up to my wing, they're scared. And if they can separate those connections with the older kids, it'd be great.
The leadership, yeah, I think, too.
And then on the, this is, I'm just throwing this out there to brainstorm. Is there a possibility of, like, parent chaperones in the morning, sometimes some resources or is it a liability issue? I mean, if they can come on field trips, is there a way to maybe?
I mean, informally, that's, that's part of what we've done here at Plymouth Elementary School. That's been a very natural, you know, wonderful culture on the playground, so. And we do have two other paras out there, but it's, it's not as formal as the other duty people on duty. So, we actually, we typically have four, if you look closely, we have four people out there at a time. But officially, like formally, according to the duty schedule, there are two. But yes, that definitely is the culture on the playground is that, you know, the parents are there and?
I do want to add to that, the school that we work at, that became an issue as well. It's a much more enclosed playground, so there's not as much of like, oh, the car is coming and cars being right there, which is a little nerve-wracking. We have less than a hundred and fifty students and we have six teachers that are assigned every morning to be on recess duty. There are six of us out there. We all have our position places, so we can supervise all the different areas. So, it's just another thing. I know it's, teachers don't like to do duties, but it's part of it, I believe, as well.
I can tell you that as well, I do know that as a parent, I've also been on the playground where there's been no teacher to even call the kids in in the morning, where you've got K through two standing out there with no teacher in front of them. So, there's also a confusion there, too. So, if you're saying there's two, two official standing out there on the playground, there's not two official a lot of times because there's no one there to take K through two inside to actually open the doors. That, that's a problem as well.
Could be a special interest.
And it's been Mrs. Morse who has had to come out frequently to get the kids in the building.
Okay, anybody else? Well, thank you all. All righty, I will entertain a motion to go into non-public session.
So moved.
Thank you all for coming tonight.